Seven o'clock, the meeting will come to order. I'm Grace Luesbrance, Cascade Township Supervisor. Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Supervisor Luesbrance.
Here.
Treasurer Pierce.
Yes.
Trustee Castle.
Here.
Trustee Shipley.
Here.
And Clerks Slater.
Thank you. Please rise if possible for the Pledge of Allegiance. Is there a motion or discussion for approval of tonight's agenda?
Discussion on the agenda. I would like to add a topic for discussion. I believe that's where both of them. In regards to Turtle Creek down here in the south of Cascade. And we had given a non-conformance permit. And we need to discuss.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as I amended.
Second. It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by clerk Slater, to approve tonight's addition with the with the addition of Turtle Creek added to the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
There isn't.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Matter for discussion. I was thinking with the new people coming on board that Ben hasn't hired yet. There may be time to do a RFP for engineering services. Seems like we're spending a lot of money on engineering and maybe we ought to look at that as a view for banking, do it for law firms. Do it for the engineering firm and wait till the other two people are on board because they should have a say in that.
And we'll discuss that further in discussion then. Oh, good idea. I second that.
So with the addition of Turtle Creek and also an RFP for engineering services. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Ken.
Yeah, thank you. We have no presentations this evening, so Article Five, Public Comments. Please come to the, or excuse me, please come to the podium, state your name and address for our record keeping. Try to limit your comments to three minutes. Ms. Stein, could you help us keep with, between you and manager Swayze, could you help us keep time? And then in the past, I've maybe been pretty lenient as far as when allowing public comment at different times. But I think in the interest of equity, as far as everybody in the township getting equal representation, I think it would help to to be a little bit more structured. I've heard both sides of that. So this first public comment period is the time to talk about anything on tonight's agenda before the board actually discusses it and makes it, and makes a decision. Tonight's agenda is pretty light. We've got gypsy moths, now known as spongy moths, the Thorn Apple River weeds and the deer call. It's not up for a vote, but there's a lot of interest in that deer issue. So the second section of public comments at the end, after the board has talked about those issues, welcome to bring up anything, anything on the agenda. So moving forward, I'll try to be a bit more structured and reach a happy medium. That being said, would anyone like to make a comment at this time? Mr. Merlin, welcome. You got to limit it to the agenda.
I know, I just heard that. Which takes out the first thing on the list.
I didn't plan it, but okay.
Which is probably in the best interests of the board, though not in the best interest of the citizens. But I did take a look at the dispersments report, which is on the agenda tonight for January. I took a quick look at it. Among other things, and I noted eight or nine items of concern, or at least question. I'm sure there are answers to all of those. But it is of interest that we paid four different legal fees in the month of January. Several to Foster Swift, which one would expect since our general counsel. $2,000 of legal fees was paid to Fishback, which is an engineering firm, which I find a little unusual. But since this is the whole meeting of the Finance and Personnel Committee, this is also the place where one brings questions about the financial dispersments ledger as well. I didn't know that Fishback has now expanded beyond engineering work to legal work. I suspect it was a mistake, and if so, it should be corrected. I also noticed that we spent $3,000, a little more than that, for Bloom Sluggett to do legal work in December. It was labeled simply professional services and in the general fund, no idea what that was for in particular. And finally, we spent Silver and Vanessen billed us $2,000 for administrative legal fees. I think they are the firm that represents us in the PFAS issues. It's under the IRF Fund. And is that where all of our expenses relating to PFAS are going to be placed?
Andrew Swayze, do you know that information? I don't.
Yep, so all of our bills to Silver Vanessen have always been placed in the interstructure revolving fund. The bills from Bloom Sluggett are related to the hotel tax tribunal cases. So we've been working with the city of Kentwood with a common legal counsel on the hotel cases to help with some efficiencies there. The four separate bills from Bloom, or not Bloom Sluggett, from Foster Swift are related to, they come from different attorneys from different projects. So we get, sometimes we get up to six or seven bills from them. Now, they're not all on one piece. And I'll have to review the Fishback invoice to see why that comment was in there, but they're obviously not providing us legal services.
Okay. Thank you.
Since that's, by time is up, I will leave all the other embarrassing, or at least potentially embarrassing things to a more detailed analysis by me, which will occur. And I also, since I can smell the stench of hypocrisy, doesn't bother me. But just looking at this group continues to bother me. And so I will now leave and leave the other item I had for a future meeting.
Thank you.
Good evening, I am Jeff Hughes, I live at 7250 Red Bud Lane, which is between Thorn Apple River and Burton Park, which is why I'm here. I'm here to discuss the deer calling, which is on the agenda today. I've lived at that location for 37 years and I have, during that time, for the most part, coexisted with the deer herd. That has changed over about the last five or six years when the deer herd has noticeably increased over that time. And how do I know? Just simply by daily sightings almost every day now as opposed to every week. Larger groups of deer, I've seen herds as big as 13, up to 20, I've heard up to 25 from other people. I've been an avid user of repellents, they no longer are effective. I have also tried to put deer resistant plants in. They are now being eaten, which tells me that the herd is hungry and starving, which is not a good thing. There are reasons, I think, for the herd increase. That is one, shorter and warmer winters, that means that fewer animals are dying off in the winter. And particularly does, I've seen larger offspring, numbers of offspring, twins, triplets are not uncommon now. Also, its natural habitat has reduced. I was surprised when I looked at a sightalight view of the area around Burton Park and how much natural area has been eliminated over about the last 30, 40 years because of development. And that has forced the herd closer and closer into a smaller natural habitat. I understand this is an emotional issue. People like deer, other people don't like deer, I, I'm in between. But there are other things that I think the township has to be concerned about besides just simply the emotional appeal or the aesthetic appeal of deer. That's one and most important is disease. With regard to the herd itself, there's chronic wasting disease. That's the reason why it's illegal now to even feed deer. That's by imposition of the state. There's bovine tuberculosis and then there is starvation, which isn't necessarily a disease, but nonetheless is, weakens the herd and makes them susceptible to disease. There is also risk of human disease. That's Lyme disease. Deer can harbor Lyme disease and then transmit it to humans by ticks. And there is an uptick, I guess unintended, in Kent County of reported Lyme disease. I would reserve my time for the rest of the, after the discussion.
You can have another three minutes afterwards, second section, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here tonight want to make a comment? Anyone virtually, Jessica?
What person? I have one person virtually.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi there, this is Scott Van Solkema. I live on Orange, right in the old gravel pit. I am also calling or wanted to touch base about the deer call. I've seen, just like the other gentleman was saying, about a dozen deer in my backyard, constantly eating my, you know, trees, grass. I actually have a game trail throughout numerous parts of my, my property. They can see very clearly during the, you know, in snow and when that's recessing, where they've run and scamper. And if either it's, I don't know if the DNR can actually capture them, like what they've done, that I believe they've done with geese, or if it's just perhaps just taking quite a few of the deer out. Obviously, also see numerous deer on the side of the road quite a bit, you know, when they've been hit by cars. So it's obviously dangerous for motorists and it's not good for the deer and it's not good for property values. So I am all in favor of anything that can be done for this deer herd in the village. You know, they don't really belong here. I understand we sort of took over their, their habitat, but they've gotten way too I guess active. And there's way too many of them in this small area. I know there was some articles done that I believe another gentleman presented to the board members regarding that U of M studies regarding how much population density per acre there should be. And our area is way too small for the amount of deer that are on this, in this small section of the village. So that's my two cents. I'm all in favor for anything that can be done for, to get rid of the deer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Another one.
Hello, this is Ruth Thompson and I live on Red Bud Lane. We have experienced just unbelievable damage from the deer. And they are now eating species that normally they just don't eat. And as Jeff said, you know, we have seen up to 13, 14 deer at a time. And it just has become a huge problem and we, you know, absolutely need a solution to this. My husband totaled a car last summer on Cascade Road in a deer car accident. So it's, it's not only a nuisance and an expense, but it's also a danger. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. That concludes that portion of the public comment section, but we'll have another one following. Items for discussion. Article Six, Approval of Tonight's Consent Agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Article Seven, Financial Actions. Is there a discussion or a motion?
Make a motion to approve? Or?
I guess it goes without saying, but manager Swayze, if you can look into the Fishback legal fees.
Yep.
It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by treasurer Pierce. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have no unfinished business tonight, so Article Nine, New Business. First will be item 0192022. The 2022 Spongy Moth Control Spray Program. Andrew Swayze?
Great, thank you. So in the fall of 2021, we contracted with Aquatic Consulting Services LLC to provide spongy moth egg mass surveys to determine the areas that will require aerial spraying for 2022. We'll note that spongy moth is the exact same thing as gypsy moth. The name has officially been changed from gypsy moth to spongy moth by the Entomological Society of America. So as we go through this process, education on the name will come as well. But as we were talking about gypsy moth last year and spongy moth this year, it's the same thing. So as a result of that survey, it's been recommended that approximately 431 acres of the township be sprayed for spongy moth suppression. Should be noted that the recommended acreage is lower than what was sprayed in 2021, significantly lower than the years previous to that. In 2018, we sprayed 1,115 acres, 1,889 acres in 2019. And then we saw a reduction in 2020 in seven, to 736. And then last year, we sprayed, sprayed 755 acres. So our biologist indicates that judging from observations, we're still in a much better shape than other areas in Michigan. But we'll need to maintain an intensive monitoring protocol to avoid losing the ground that we've gained. So we have utilized mid-Michigan helicopters for spongy moth suppression services since the onset of our program until 2015. And then in 2015, Mid-Michigan helicopters was bought by Hamilton Helicopter. We had, they have overseen our spraying program for the last seven years. Our spray program last year was successful, no known issues reporting from the contractor or the residents in the affected area. As I mentioned, last year, we sprayed 755 acres. So in 2020, the contract rate was $61.75. In 2021, it was $62.20. Contract is going up a bit significant this year at $67.40. That's an increase of 8.4%. And the cost is associated directly with increases in the cost of the product. And of course, the fuel costs that we've all experienced at the pump. In total, if the board chose to spray all 431 acres, the cost of the spray program would be $29,050. So the program takes place in the time period between May 1st and June 15th, with a more specific date available when the weather breaks. We're required to notify all residences in the spray block areas of the program. And any objectors to the spray program are eligible to remove from the spray block at the discretion of the township. Included a couple items in your packet for review, the proposed agreement with Hamilton Helicopter, our communication from Aquatic Consulting Services regarding the spray program and the survey, the map of the proposed spray blocks for 2022, a spongy moth information brochure published by the MSU Extension, and then information regarding the pesticide that's used in the program. So we've participated in the spongy moth spray program in conjunction with Mid-Michigan Helicopter going on 24 years now. We've participated in the program because of the acknowledgement of the devastating effect that the spongy moth has on, spongy moth population could have on the tree canopy cover of the township. During the onset of the program, it wasn't uncommon for us to spray between 1,000 and 2,000 acres per year. The continued treatment has allowed the program to be successful and our spongy moth program to be controlled. The partnership with Aquatic Consulting Resources and Hamilton Helicopter has allowed us to efficiently allocate our financial resources to the program. The survey ensures that the aerial spray program effectively targets areas of infestation above set thresholds and on several occasions has saved us from unnecessary spraying, as was the case in 2013 and the 2010, 11, where we actually didn't spray anywhere in the township. So as I mentioned, a rate of $67.40 per acre, $5.20 per acre more than the 2022 contract. And again, if the board chooses to spray the entire area, $29,050. We did budget $50,000 for the program in 2022. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yes. Question and a couple comments. Of course, you guys all know how I feel about the spongy moth and the devastation I've seen it wreak upon communities before. Ben, has any of our neighboring communities gotten on board yet? This is something that's kind of been dismayed for a while.
So Kentwood got on three or four years ago and has been spraying continuously. We have not convinced, or we, the Caldonia Township Board has not been convinced to come on board yet. Lowell Township sprayed one year. I don't believe they're anticipating on spraying this year. And then Ada is just choosing this year to start a program. We'll note that they have to, they're recommended to spray over 2,000 acres. They had a pretty devastating canopy eaten last year and their, their residents have been pushing for that. So they're looking at getting in.
But that might help especially around our primers a little bit.
Yep.
That's all I have.
I was talking to a Parks Committee member who brought up a good point that she had been dealing, she's been helping a lot with other issues in the township, the oak wilt and different stuff like that. And she was curious, or she was concerned that, are we getting advice from businesses or parties other than the people that we are giving our business? So we're, we're paying. And I don't know if that's the case here, but.
I guess what would you, what would we be looking for?
Like a, well, I guess through the Parks Committee, I don't have the connections, but there are a lot of resources at the state and county level. For example, with the oak wilt, other issue, other invasive species. It would just, if there are not saying the advice we're giving is wrong, but someone who's getting paid by us is going to most likely say that we need their services. Does that make, I'm not saying we don't on this issue, but kind of just checks and balances.
So I have not sought out the advice of any other entities.
Are there a lot of people that do this type of work? Also a good question. Very highly specialized.
Yeah, so I think you can, I mean, there's two different angles to that, right? So there are certainly what I would call entomologists experts, right? So if we wanted to seek out the expert of, you know, the MSU Extension or a health department or the state about, you know, is the spray program necessary? You know, are the gypsy moths going to be devastating? There's, there's plenty of experts on that. As far as, is there somebody besides aquatic resources that we could bring in to do the survey? I don't know. I know everybody in the area uses aquatic resources. We've tried for years to find a competitive bidder for the spraying service. The only other entity we found is a spray by biplane. And it's really hard to pick out the individual, you know, if you have one parcel that decides they don't want to participate, it's really hard to pick them out of the spray block using a biplane sprayer rather than a helicopter sprayer. So I don't think we could find another sprayer. I don't know about using another, you know, reporting entity. We pay them about eight, actually, we just went up to $9,000 last year. But as far as experts on gypsy moth and if there's alternate means of control or something like that, we could certainly reach out to MSU Extension or, you know, something, something like that.
Sounds good.
And they did include a nice description from the Michigan State Extension and Colorado State Extension. And, you know, they give a really good description, especially saying that oak trees are the favorite host of the moth and we have a lot of oak trees in the township. And that's, you know, as does Ada and our neighbors, and those are the ones that they really go after and destroy. So I'm really comfortable with the effectiveness and the safety of this program. It's been very effective. And obviously, we like to read the professional comments from the entomologist from Michigan State University Extension. That's included in here as well as Colorado State University, because they're also affected a lot by this. So I'm real comfortable with it. And with that, I move to approve the control spray program for this year.
I support.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the 2022 Spongy Moth Control Spray Program contract. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Shipley?
Yes.
Trustee Kessel?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Treasurer Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook?
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes, supervisor Luesbrance?
Yes. Motion carried. Item 0202022, Contract for Aquatic Weed Management for the Thorn Apple River. Long time in the making, manager Swayze?
Good deal. So as you all know, we have recently approved the Thorn Apple River Association, or sort of Thorn Apple River Special Assessment District. 301 properties, $90,300 each year. And the SAD was established for the purposes of making certain improvements to the Thorn Apple River, including weed control and removal, debris removal and safety enhancements, and silt control and removal. So as part of the process in establishing the SAD, the board created the Thorn Apple River SAD Ad-Hoc Committee to provide recommendations to the township board on how the SAD fund should be utilized. So the committee focused on procuring the services of an aquatic weed management consultant and contractor as the first quote unquote order of business for the SAD. So the board approved the issuance of the RFP for the services in February. And we received two bids, one from Aquatic Doctors and one from PLM Lake and Land Management Corporation. So I included a copy of the RFP and both of the quotes in your packet. So the SAD Ad-Hoc Committee met in early March to review the proposed bids. Both companies came highly regarded by the references. They each have experience working in Cascade Township and on the Thorn Apple River. And after reviewing the qualifications and experience of each of the contractors, as well as the financial bids, the ad hoc committee did recommend the board select PLM to do the aquatic weed management activities. A couple reasoning, reasons for the selection include efficiencies from using the same company that is working on other sections of the Thorn Apple River, more robust mechanical harvesting capabilities, and a more detailed initial management timeline. So the ad hoc committee is recommending the initial contract via for a period of three years, but also have an out clause at the end of each year should the aquatic weed management program to be inefficient or ineffective, or if the contractor proves unsatisfactory. So if the board chooses to award the contract, the next step will be for the committee to meet with the selected contractor to organize the program for the first year. Timeline includes applying for the permits in March, spring notices to residents and doing our initial spring water quality testing, an initial vegetation survey in early May, an initial herbicide application for invasive plants in late May, May through August, application of various herbicides if they're necessary, midsummer herbicide application in June, a midsummer water quality sampling in July, followed by a midsummer native plant control. And that could be either mechanical or by herbicide. A late summer herbicide application in August, the fall vegetation survey in August, September, followed by the fall water quality sampling. And then October, November, putting together year-end management plan for the following year. And then November, following up with Eagle for our required reports. So the initial estimate from PLM for the program is $40,000 to $58,000, which you'll notice is a pretty big range. Once the contractor is on board and has a great understanding of the scope of work can be conducted, a narrower cost estimate will be available and the formal SAD budget will be forwarded to the board by the committee for consideration. With that, the committee is recommended to approve PLM Lake and Land Management for a Thorn Apple River Aquatic Weed Management Program for a three-year period with an annual out clause.
Sitting on that board, I can tell you that we've discussed both competitors very thoroughly. We've heard pros and cons of both competitors. But what impressed the ad hoc committee was the timeline from PLM was very precise. The water testing and the quality was there that the other competitor did not have. So based upon that, along with the fact that they have the resources for harvesting the weeds or the other apparently contracts out the harvesting, we went with PLM. And that was our recommendation to this board.
Thank you. Is there further discussion or a motion?
I moved to approve the recommendation of PLM Lake and Management, Management.
Obviously, I support.
So that's a motion by trustee McDonald's supported by trustee Shipley. To approve the contract for aquatic weed management for the Thornapple River. Uh, awarded to professional lake management. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, zero two one, twenty twenty-two Township Managers Department had appointments. Andrew Swayze.
Great, thank you. So we currently have two department head positions that are being filled by interim appointments within our organization. Uh, so the first one is Director of Human Resources. Uh, this position, which was recently created by action of the Township Board is currently being filled by Katie Morowski. So she began work with the township as a human resource generalist in two thousand and twenty. Has been serving as the interim human resources director since October of two thousand twenty-one. She has a bachelor's degree in business administration from a coinous college with the focus on human resources and accounting. And prior to coming to Cascade Township, Katie's held several human resource positions. With Hope Public Schools, Forest Hills Public Schools and East Grand Rapids Public Schools. Uh, so during her time in Cascade, she's proved to be a true asset for the organization. I think a lot of you have had a chance to work with, directly with Katie and hopefully you've had the same experience. Uh, she's played a key role in recruitment efforts over the past two years. In fact, I think between this week and next week, she'll have participated in over forty interviews in two weeks. So. Um, she's doing a great job there, not only helping us choose candidates, uh, but getting us quality applications as well. Uh, she's also ushered in townships through several human resource related, uh, changes in the past couple of years. She's shown the ability to provide high level service to the employees of the organization and community. And she's definitely very well liked by the staff. Uh, we also have an open planning director position. So that position was also recently created by the Township Board. Uh, is currently being filled by Brian Hillbrands. So Brian began work with the township as a planner in early two thousand twenty. And has been serving as the interim planning director since September of two thousand twenty-one. Brian has a bachelor's degree in geography and business from Calvin College and a master's degree in urban planning from the University of Michigan. And prior to coming to Cascade Township, Brian served as the coordinator for the Ada Township Downtown Development Authority for two and a half years. Uh, despite becoming, despite coming to Cascade during the hectic beginnings of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, he smoothly transitioned into our operations. Uh, as the interim planning director, he's already ushered several large development projects through the planning commission. Is, and is overseeing several current developments. Uh, he's been a quick study of the township ordinances and development processes. Has integrated himself as a true team player. Uh, he's shown great aptitude in knowing when to make a decision and when to seek input from other resources such as the township attorney or manager. I also had a, uh, good in-depth conversation with Chris Nordike, who is the current Planning Commission Chair. Uh, and Chris has also endorsed Bryant for the permanent position. Uh, so in your packet, uh, I have included the job descriptions for both of those positions. Uh, they're both classified as pay grade seven positions. Uh, they're both awarded significant raises in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. Uh, budget and recognition of the work they were already doing in their interim positions. And of course will be evaluated again near the end of fiscal year twenty-two. Uh, with that, I'm asking the board to confirm, uh, my appointments of Katie Morowski as the Director of Human Resources and Brian Hillbrands as planning director.
Any comments?
Sure. You know, I always have comments. Um, two things pop out about these people. Number one, they're fully qualified. If you look at some appointments and municipalities, it's like, you're my buddy. I'm going to take care of you. But in this case, both these people did their homework well before employment here. Uh, personally, I've worked with both of them. I'm very impressed with Brian. He seems like a. Energy that just doesn't stop. But I mean, sometimes I worry about his wellbeing because he's still in the office. He's a taskmaster, not a time master. And Katie certainly seems to know her stuff when it comes to HR. And having decent personality certainly smooths over some rough feathers. So. Uh, I, I'm in favor of what Ben has found on, on these two people.
Trustee McDonald.
I'd just like to echo what John said and also add that. Uh, Brian does a great job on the zoning board of appeals. He really. Expresses not only good knowledge of, of our ordinances. But applies them very well to the cases and writes a very good description as he applies. Uh, you know, the ordinances to the, to each case and he makes it very clear to the zoning, zoning board of appeals. And I've just had nothing but great experiences with Brian and his, his work.
Yeah, and I've had experience with both Katie and Brian. Uh, they very professional experience, very knowledgeable. Um, I'm in favor of both of them.
Also recommend for Brian, I spoke with the Ada clerk. Jackie Smith, and I told her that Brian was working with us and she said, oh, you're so lucky. You got a good one. So. Comes highly recommended for me to, I, I think she felt like we kind of stole him. So.
Good.
It's a good recommend.
It was a good steal.
Yeah.
Treasure Pierce.
I like their non-confrontational attitude.
Street.
And I think we heard from our strategic planning folks last night that Brian. Has done a good job working with them too. So. I'd make a motion that we approve Ben's recommendations.
And I support.
It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley to approve manager Swayze's. Recommendations for department heads. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next would be. Article ten, and this is just a discussion topics. So we've got the deer, no voting, the board decisions, deer call. RFP for engineering and Turtle Creek. Let's do the deer call first. Go ahead, Ben.
Great. So you know, just to kick off the discussion, uh, again tonight, really, you know, what I see this as being is the discussion of how to have the discussion. I did provide some information that I was able to come up with, uh, over the, the past year or so. Uh, regarding, uh, some deer call stuff. So the first one. Uh, the report from the Michigan State Police regarding deer involved crashes, both in Kent County and Cascade Township. Uh, two thousand twenty-one data isn't readily available yet, but should be out shortly. Uh, but what I thought was most interesting was, uh, even though we had two twelve thousand twenty where we know. There weren't a lot of people out driving for at least, you know, three or four months in there. Our deer related crashes in Cascade Township, uh, still went up. Uh, even if only by, by a couple. So I think the trend here shows that. Um, the amount of deer involved crashes are, uh, starting to rise in Cascade Township, which is obviously an issue. Uh, I put together, uh, put in here a deer management plan that was provided to me by the township manager in Meridian Township. I also had a chance to talk to him and his team about their deer call program. Uh, quite, quite a bit ago, they've been doing it for a few years now. Um, they have a few different resources than, uh, we would have. In particular, they have their own police department. So their officers serve as their. Sharpshooters for the deer call program. Uh, but they were a wealth of knowledge, uh, definitely provided some resources. Of course, all deer call programs have to be approved by the state. Uh, so do have some contacts, um, if we wanted to start on something. Uh, with the DNR and the state of Michigan who we could, uh, contact. Uh, and then just a, um, article, uh, this is actually forwarded to me by trustee Kessel. Uh, on a program that's being done at the University of Michigan Dearborn Campus. Uh, and I thought it was interesting because it does, uh, relate a little bit, you know, what we've heard tonight and what we've heard some from some residents is. Um, Burton Park, uh, seems to be an issue in that area, specifically with a. Nature area right smack dab in the middle of a pretty highly densely populated area. Um, and I thought it was just a good read on how they were able to balance the call with the safety and the needs of their residents around there as well. So. Uh, so that was just some of the, the information. Again, it's that I certainly don't have any answers for you tonight. Uh, deer call is always going to be, uh, a popular topic on both sides, uh, when you, you start talking to the, the community about it. Um, but, uh, happy to start collecting any resources you guys want, need or. You know, putting together anything at the direction of the township that you'd like to see.
Jeff and I had a chance to get together, uh, last Thursday and spent quite a bit of time talking about this. And he has some experience, uh, with these people at White Buffalo. I don't know if that information got in the packet or not. Um, but we talked about that extensively when the deer population. And it is emotional because I talked to some other people that are on the other side. They like the deer, don't want to see the deer killed. Um, but. This white buffalo, uh, incorporated, was that in there, Ben, or?
No, all that was in there was the resume from.
There, this is, uh, quite a resume and, and I think Jeff has had some, uh, contact with, uh. Jason, who runs it, these, uh, people that are involved. With this program, um, are mostly PhD people and biologists and, uh. Then when they go into an area, they determine first if the population is higher than it should be per acre. And when they, when they do, uh, and, and if, when Jeff gets up and talks again, maybe he can explain. A little bit about the cost and determining that. I don't know if Meridian told you, Ben, but their cost was involved in some of that or not.
Uh, it was, I mean, it's a little bit indirect because they do a lot of, uh, stuff using their internal resources.
Okay. Well, first, first step that, that this white wa, or white buffalo does is, uh. Determine if there is an overpopul, population and where it is and. Then they, uh, uh, hunt. Or the deer at night with, uh, tree blinds and silencers on their guns and they're. Totally safe about it. And then if they can donate the, the meat, they, they don't just throw it away. They. Donate it to charities. Um. The only problem like the, like Jeff mentioned is this wasting disease and potential, uh, deer carrying, uh. COVID too. So they might not be able to donate as much meat if, uh, the herd were healthy. But, uh, we had a good conversation. Um, we both. Acknowledge that deer are, you know, nice to see and nice to see the. The babies in the spring, but every, I mean, ever since I've lived here, I've always taken from Cascade Road. Uh, to, uh, my neighborhood, which is just before you get to the river. And I've, I've always driven with extreme caution at night for fear that. A deer was going to run across the road. And even when I drive on my street, when my kids were little. Uh, had deer jump right on the hood of my car. And you try to explain that to the insurance company and. Why didn't they run around in front of me? But there aren't a lot of deer and behind my house, I, I can notice, uh, fourteen. Fifteen deer in the herd at one time, just, uh, standing there. So. Maybe Jeff can, uh, if he gets a chance to speak again during public comments, he can. Explain a little bit more about the cost, but we did spend quite a bit of time talking about it and what could be done about, and he has some ideas too.
It'll be on the Parks Committee agenda too for. I guess April nineteenth is the Parks Committee meeting, April nineteenth at eight AM. And Mr. Hughes has shared some articles. The Parks Committee is going to have a copies of all those too.
I guess, you know, that would be a question too. Is this, you know, if this is a program that the board is interesting. At least interested in learning more about. Do you want to, you know, remand that discussion to the Parks Committee and have them come to the board with the recommendation? Would you rather do it as a board, um, through, you know, discussion process or, um, you know, work sessions? I guess I, I'd look for, you know, if this is something we want to pursue, how we want to pursue it.
Does the DNR provide any, uh, experience or help with this? I mean, ultimately they have to approve the program. Do they have experts that can come down and brief us or give us guidance on it?
So I do have the contact information for people in the DNR that, uh, focus on the deer call program. So Frank did let me know, uh, that they benefited from the fact that the expert at the state level is also a Meridian Township President.
Okay.
Um, so, um, he didn't know if, if that. Gave them some more latitude for the, him participating in, in the process, but. I could certainly reach out to them and, you know, say, we're having this conversation and see. You know, if they, I mean, even if they could zoom into a Parks Committee meeting or a, a board discussion.
I, I'd like to be involved, uh, now that I don't trust our Parks Committee, but I think it's a decision for the board. We represent the people of the township. And I'd like to have a work session, if that's appropriate, to get this thing started. I mean, somebody's got to. Do the kickoff and, and get her going. It's obviously a problem with at least some of our residents. I've witnessed some of it too. I have a herd of twenty-five in the wintertime that come through the yard. And to get some guidance from people that have either worked with a problem. Or people that have experts on critters like the DNR, I think that'd be a great benefit. I'd love to hear from the person from Meridian that's, that's involved in their pro, program too. You know, we could pay him seventeen cents a mile to drive up here.
In Venison.
Well, I used to hunt deer for many, 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 many years. I don't anymore, but, um, I noticed that the deer count would, uh, would fluctuate. Over about a seven year period, you'd have the highs and lows and, uh. So I think nature does a really good job of doing what it has to do and buics take care of the rest of it. So. I'm not involved. I don't want to be involved in, um. In hiring people to shoot deer. We just have to, we just have to get, uh, get along with them. I, they were here first.
I agree with Timmy. But on the other hand, I don't like seeing critters starve to death. I. I've noticed like Mr. Hughes has, um, stated too, that. Some of the herd is kind of thin this year compared to previous years. And I think that has a direct, uh, result of lack of food for the critters. So I think it's in the best interest of the critters and the residents to perhaps pursue this farther.
What are the rules or what do we have going on with Peace Park and Burden Park as far as hunting?
So there is no hunting allowed in Burden Park. Uh, in Peace Park, uh, as part of the. Process when the grant was received from the DNR back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Uh, there was essentially bonus points in the grant process for allowing hunting. So. We allow bow and arrow hunting by permit. Uh, I believe there's about fifteen permits per year that are allowed in Peace Bar.
Who sets the permit number?
So I think it's set in the ordinance.
It's during the hunting season. You also have state laws. That prohibit the discharge of a firearm within, I think, five hundred feet above residents. So doing an organized co. Kind of helps those restrictions be eased aside. Cause I'm sure that, uh, if they decide to put a deer stand in my backyard, which is in five, within five hundred feet of my house. That they would be okey dokey to do that.
Who's they?
They being professional hunters or the DNR, whoever.
You probably still need permission though to be on private property.
Oh, sure. Yeah, sure. No doubt about that.
And how do residents, what's the permit process? How do residents get those?
First come, first served.
Where do they go?
They line up in front of Township Hall on the day that the permits are available.
Oh, so, okay. So it's Township Hall?
Yeah.
And it's not through the fire station?
No.
Okay.
So you, when we were, when we were at that building, that's where the. The, the new Township Hall.
How was that advertised?
Yeah, what day would we do that?
So I'm not, I'm not sure what day it is. It's, it's on the, on the website. We don't advertise it. We get more, the more people interested than there are permits available. So.
Do you know offhand, Ben, if they're successful with archery season?
I don't.
I know I'm better with the rifle than a bow and arrow.
But, once you have a permit, one of those fifteen permits, can you take as many deer as you're allowed to by the state, as long as you have licenses for the deer tags?
Yeah. So all we're doing is giving them the permits to be able to hunt in the park. They still have to get their tags from the state. So. If they have tags for two deer, they can pull, they can pull two deer.
I just want to say, as John said, this is a pervasive problem across the whole township. I mean, I, I'd like to get input from the parks. But it's beyond the parks. I think the, the board needs to look into this because it is a township-wide problem. They've overbred, overpopulated. Unfortunately, you know, we all love deer, but th, they are, um, destructive. And they're destroying a lot of the township, even a lot of our natural vegetation. It's stripped and they're eating things now that I didn't see them eat even, even eat ten years ago. And, and the destruction is, is, is really bad. So. I'm not sure what the solution is, but I'd like us to look, to find out what, if it's a cult program like Meridian Township did or something else, but I think we should look into it.
I just want to make sure that it's vetted with the public. I know we're not all going to agree, but as, that people have had a chance to weigh in.
But to Tom's point, you know, talking to the people from Meridian, you know, they originally, not only do they have a lot of. Meridian Township Parkland in Meridian, but they have a lot of county parkland too. So they originally thought that they'd be able to limit it just to public space. Public spaces and when they got into the program, it was very clear. The experts told them that if you, even with all the public space that you have, you're just gonna push the deer into private natural areas. So their call includes private properties too strategically located around the the township. Cause it's that, that's exactly it, if we decided we were just gonna do a call in Burton Park. All of a sudden, there's not gonna be any more deer in Burton Park, cause they're gonna find somebody a place else where they're not getting shot.
We're gonna get all those lol deer and the ate a deer.
You know, as technology goes along, maybe a lead bullet is not as effective as some other methods. Certainly, they they have perfected. Earth control in critters and maybe that could be something that could be less to get it as well.
How many deer do they take in this call per year?
I can't remember what's set in Meridian, but it's, it's all based on, you know, you have to provide some type of. Some type of analysis is what the overpopulation is and how many deer you should take, so. But I think in Meridian, they're up around a hundred and fifty or two hundred.
Twenty per square mile.
I'm sure that DNR would have some guidance on that, they're not gonna say. He can whack everything or he can only whack one, they're gonna be reasonable on what can be. What can support the deer in that area?
So in two thousand twenty, Meridian took a hundred and forty-five deer, hunting twenty-three hundred acres.
Have they done it more than once or was it a one time deal?
No, they started in two thousand eleven.
And then kept going?
Yep, forty-three, ninety, a hundred and twenty-seven, a hundred and fifty, sixty-three, seventy-three, so.
No, alternative is import a bunch of timber wolves.
Or my brother. What about Venison? Can we control, we do the, what we, where the Venison goes?
We certainly can control that, so in the Meridian program, they require that the. Each hunter that's selected for the program, they have to donate at a minimum their first year. And then the rest of the deer, they can, the hunters could either donate or do what they want with them. And then in Meridian, they have sharpshooters on their police force as well and all of those, so their deer are. Harvested by their police sharpshooters, they they bought a couple commercial freezers. They're putting the freezer, cause they do all their hunting at night and then their DPW actually guts them in the morning and donates them.
Doe only hunting?
I don't think so, they didn't mention that, but I didn't ask them directly.
That's how you call the herd.
Makes sense.
And I've got a good thirteen. That come every day and. Are destroying my shrubbery. Can't buy enough liquid fence, a base hardware to, it just doesn't work anymore, so. Frustrating. I don't think they're. So beautiful all the time.
I was excited because I planted tulips in a really cool, like a just a big perfect, like three bags in a little area in the middle of the driveway. And I was waiting and waiting and then you could tell, it got to the point where you could tell they were, you could tell what color tulips were gonna come up. And then we pulled in the driveway and all of them had been Motown, not that I would base a vote on that, but I won't forget it.
It's not wrong.
Did think some bad thoughts about our local deer population.
But the overall destructive to vegetation is amazing.
Yeah.
So it's not, you know, it's not just our little flowers in our yards, it's across the township and. If you've read, you know, I've I've read National Geographic a lot and the elk destroyed Yellowstone National Park until they brought in wolves. And within a decade, I mean, it literally changed the course of rivers. Because the vegetation was so destroyed by the elk, so deer can do the same thing, they can change the environment in very negative ways by. Because of the overpopulation, they overeat and destroy and take out plants and and even this, some of these articles here, they're talking about. The the vegetation, the native plant species have been going away because they're overeaten by the deer. And so, you know, it's it's a pervasive problem.
And if you eat meat, I mean realistically. If you're vegan, that's one thing, but if you're a meat eater, we all. Somebody will eat it, we grew up on Venice and Venice.
Our employees is a great maker of Venice and Stewie, the big hunter, so.
So how are we gonna, so what is, moving forward?
So I guess what I'm hearing is the board wants to be involved in at least learning more about the program. So I could reach out to the DNR to start out with, to see if they'd be willing to. Do a, I would say, a pre-meeting workshop with the board at one of our meetings in April. Just to talk a little bit about, you know, what a program might look like, see if they have resources for, you know, other places like White Buffalo or something like that. You know, together a program and and go from there.
Sounds good, any other comments on the deer issue?
If we can manage the sponge moss, we ought to be able to manage the deer.
Helicopters, sharpshooters, maybe they would give us a deal if we combined their services. Alright, next up, let's do engineering, RFP for engineering.
Just came to me looking at the the numbers this this morning. We spent eight thousand plus on pushback in January. And I think we probably spent over, quite a bit over a hundred thousand on them yearly, Ben.
More than that, some years.
Way more than that.
And in my twelve years with the board, we've done, I think, two, two bank RFPs. And they've done two legal RFPs. And banking fees and the legal fees are quite a bit less than that per year, so I think it's time for us to take a look at it.
I'd like to bring up something else too, now Ben brought this up a while back, we've kind of bantered it around a little bit. But we added, we talked about adding to your staff. With a qualified civilian engineer or somebody that's qualified an engineer. And I think that Ben's plan that he had. Presented, which wasn't a total plan, but at least some forethought about it. Adding to a staff of a civilian engineer can eliminate a lot of those costs that Ken's talking about. And provide Ben with some extra support. You know, with Brian gets into issues with planning and zoning and whatnot. There's an engineer there that can help him along, so I I think that the board ought to, without any delay. Get somebody in there before we issue an RFP.
I'd wait till we hire the two people that we're gonna hire.
Well, interviews are tomorrow and Friday, so that's perfect, cause I think we should do both.
Okay, whatever, but that's my two cents worth.
Yeah, that was just gonna be my, you know, take as well, I think, you know, engineering RFP is probably long overdue. I would just wait to see what the strengths are that come out of this person that's hired for the DPW position. You know, so if we get somebody that is very, very strong in civil engineering. You know, I think an RFP would look a little bit different than if we get somebody who, you know, has, you know, a moderate background in engineering. As to what those services might look like, you know, but the hope is, is that. A lot of, and we, we've talked about it a couple of times, you know, we're never gonna get away from having to. You know, hire an engineering consultant, but you know, it could get to the point where if we hire somebody that's strong enough, we just issue. RFPs for engineering services on a project to project basis. Or some communities even do, what they'll do is they'll issue instead of a request for proposals, they'll issue a request for qualifications. And you end up with, you know, three engineering firms that you like. And then anytime you get, have engineering work, you just let those three engineering firms bet on it to show it off, so. You know, the the need for contractual engineering services could be pretty limited. If we get the right person into the the DPW position. And a couple of the resumes we have are really strong, you know, we have a couple of people that have spent. An entire career, you know, twenty-ish years in civil engineering, so.
I like what you said.
Supervisor, you, you had some numbers for what we spent on pathway engineering. Last couple of years.
I was gonna try to stay above the, alright, so the pathway, this was troubling, the pathway millage. There was, I believe, four sections of pathway added and then there was the possible bridge over Burton, over the overpass on Burton. And I, after the bridge came up on the agenda a month or so ago, I got the numbers. And so that what we paid for, the bridge didn't go through, but for those four sections of pathway. We paid, I believe, one point four four million dollars, so that was for the company to actually build them, that was for the. Signs on the pathway and that was to to move utilities, so one point four four million. Not taken into account was the engineer charged us seven hundred and forty-four thousand in separate engineering services. And it wasn't clear to me that that was taken out of the millage, but it sure seems like that's, that we can do a lot. Better than that.
So that's why I would be in favor of having an in-house engineer to do all of our pathway engineering. We would save a tremendous amount of money.
Oh, we've seen six hour senior management, senior engineering rates for sidewalk repair, it's ridiculous. And then that Burton Street Bridge, I didn't wanna. I, this is gonna be a clean meeting, but that Burton Street Bridge project, uh, it's up on the agenda. We have, everybody comes to present and all the money they've charged us, they didn't even show up in person, he didn't show up in person to to present it.
I I think with Ben's plan, most of those types of incidences will be.
Hundred percent, it's long overdue. We'll save a fortune, I feel like we talk about fiscal responsibility, but then our arm is hemorrhaging into certain buckets and this is a big step forward.
Civil engineer, thank you.
Both in-house and RFP, so next, so first we'll do in-house, but let's say tentatively. On the agenda and RFP for engineering.
Or that other program that Ben was talking about, not RFP, but quality, quality to whatever.
Request for qualifications, yeah, so I, again, I would, you know, come back, you know, once we had that person on board, you know, be able to talk to them a little bit and then see. Whether the RFQ or the RFP process makes.
Well, that's, that's only proper that you get the new guy involved, new guy or a new gal involved in making that decision.
I guess I would say to go ahead and get started, cause the process takes a long time, but if you guys wanna wait at this point.
I I'd say wait and let the new person get involved in that process. It's my three cents worth.
Good discussion. So do we have a motion for an RFP for engineering? Alright, third topic, Turtle Creek, Mr. Shipley?
I brought this up. I received communication from a couple residents that live over on. Stone Gate Court, I believe it is. And. I recall, and I've been, I don't remember how long ago, but. The previous Director of Planning and Ordinance. Brought before this board a request to issue a non-conforming permit. For down on Thorn Apple River Drive and it was Egypt Valley Nursery or Egypt Valley Landscape.
Creek, maybe?
That's one and. At the time, remind me guys, at the time, didn't Mr. Peterson state? That they needed it just to store some vehicles down there?
Or was it John?
Down on Thorn Apple River Drive, right at Turtle Creek, you know, you come down the big hill coming into Cascade. And there's a long driveway that goes back to a barn. And he came and said that they requested a letter of non-conformance or non-conforming use. And we approved it, and at that time, as I recall. It was for storage of landscaped vehicles, which I thought, no big deal, okay? So he's gonna have some pickup trucks back there and maybe a couple tractors. Well, apparently now, from the photos that I've been sent, and I've been in touch with Ben on this. Photos that I've been sent is that there's a lot more going on back there, including filling in the creek with debris. Filling in the wetlands with debris, from the photos I've seen, it kinda looks like a junkyard. But my big concern is we've spent a whole ton of money and a whole ton of conversation and effort. To clean up our creeks. Now reportedly, we've got a creek that's being abused. And this should be the same creek as dumps into the Thorn Apple River eventually.
So this one is Turtle Creek.
Right.
And all of the creeks that way do go down to the Thorn Apple, but it's different than Drop Creek, the one that we spent a lot of time talking about.
Is that the parcel that building or ground just is, okay.
Goes way back.
Is our, the factual though background, is that right? That, or was, okay.
Yeah, so the, the way that that came about was it was part of the two thousand and thirteen PUD amendments. To the Centennial Golf Course Project, so. When that golf course went under and came to the township for redevelopment. There was a lot of uses that were allowed in that PUD, of course, the main one is the. Apartments that are on, what was the main part of the golf course now? But there was almost a dozen other individual properties that. Had individual uses attached to them, most of them were either single family or attached family houses. You know, we had the slightly larger one up here on Thorn Hills and Tahoe, where those white attached condos are now. That one was allowed, had a couple other uses that were allowed there, could have been a daycare. Adults nursing facility, it turned into condos, so the one that we're talking about. Which was the Buildings and Grounds Facility for the golf course when it was operational in the. PUD is listed as a, a legal non-conforming use for landscaping company, basically. The description of what's allowed there is basically only two or three sentences, so. I don't recall the conversation that Steve had with the board when he came to talk about that. The language in the PUD shows that at least the businesses that's being run there is appropriate based on the PUD language. Now, it's probably not appropriate or what's concerned the township is what you're talking about with debris getting pushed into the creek. So that is something, in other areas of the township, we typically work with Eagle on that, you know, they have the regulatory authority on that. We haven't been able to convince them to come out and look at that. Despite the fact that both the township and the road commission, because the residents also contacted the road commission. Due to soil erosion issues. To to look at that, so we're having another meeting with some of the residents next week. I've asked consultant that we have that specializes in environmental engineering to at least tell us, right? So we don't have any environmental engineering experts on our staff, so to kind of tell us, hey, does this look like something that? Eagle should be regulating or, you know, if we eventually catch the attention of Eagle, are they gonna tell us that it's not a big deal anyways?
That's what they told me when I called them on this, but doesn't hurt to, sure.
Well, I know that we do also have some other ordinances in the township that prohibits you from. Falling brush in from other properties, I think that's residential property though. So I have a concern there and it sounds like Ben is already still on top of it. But if we need to get legal involved in this, I wouldn't hesitate at all, because it could develop into something significant.
And what about the, so that not, what was it, a non-conformance permit? Was that, does that go with the property, like it was the. It was in place before with the previous owners and then the guy, whoever buys buys it, that parcel just inherits that?
Yeah, so it's not necessarily a permit, right, so it's just a non-conforming use. That's written into the PUD, just like any other use would be written into there. But because it's non-conforming, it runs with the property, so if the property was sold to another landscaping company and they continue to run a landscaping business out of it. It would be allowed, the non-conformance, non-conforming use expires. If it's not used in a six month period, right, so if the current company left. And was out of there for a year and then tried to sell it to another landscaping company, they would no longer be able to use that use anymore. It would, it would revert to the underlying use, which is residential.
What about if they're exceeding the scope or the fact that it's just a little brief? Description, you know, could we, can't we, is that one thing we can do is make sure that they stick within that wording?
Yep, so Brian and I met with the the residents and re- reviewed the work that was going on there, Brian's been out to the site. We don't think there's anything that they're doing right now that doesn't conform with what would typically be done through a landscape company. Again, the thing that concerned us was, you know, pushing the brush and we really need Eagle to weigh in on whether or not that is a. Environmental no-no or not.
From what I understand, the erosion factor that Ben indicated has also been turned over to the road commission. Because of erosion, it's from clear cutting some of the vegetation on the property. Obviously, most properties and. Operators put up silt fences if there is gonna be a possibility of erosion, so. This is something I could come back up in for hotter discussion in the future if we don't act now.
There's a development and I cannot remember the name off the top of my head, but I'm curious, that stalled and it's been. Unfinished for quite a long time. unfinished for quite a long time. Near off of Spalding. And I can't remember the name, but I'm curious. I'll ask you about that, too. Might have to wait till the last, next meeting.
Mr. Penanen's Development?
What's it called?
I can't remember what the neighborhood is.
I'll check my email and get back, but that, I, that's another one to follow up on.
That's all I have, that let the board know that it could blow up, and I'm sure that Ben will keep us advised as to what's happening there. But I would not hesitate to get legal involved to whatever matter that we have to, to maintain the residents' expectations and the quality of the streams that ultimately feed into the river.
Article eleven, public comments. So now's the time to comment on anything.
Guess I'll take my other three minutes.
Just to follow up on a, where I was when I was cut off before. COVID is becoming a greater concern. There are now two studies, they haven't been peer reviewed yet, about the existence of COVID in deer and concern about deer being reservoirs for COVID and considerable concern about human contact now with infected deers. Another issue that I think needs to be discussed, and as Mr. McDonald had said, biodiversity is a big issue that has to be considered. Problem is twofold. One is the destruction of the natural flora, but then also the replacement by invasive flora, which deer don't want. If anybody's familiar with garlic mustard, that's the one thing the deer will not eat. Much to my chagrin. Yeah.
They pass my yards.
Yeah, boy. The other thing I think it's worth looking at in terms of follow-up and study is what's being done by the U of M at their Deerburn Cats Campus. Because I think it's a very similar type environment, at least to where I live, with Burton and a highly populated area around it. It's a three-hundred-acre plot that is next to the Deerburn Campus. According, and I'm just relying upon the newspaper article I read, they had eighty-six deer within a three-hundred-acre area. The DNR was very involved in it. The N R was recommending ten to twelve deer for that area. Ultimately, the regions decided on a thirty-six deer population, and that was after consulting with the population. And I think it would be interesting to talk with them to see how they balanced out the interests. Again, I, I'm, I enjoy seeing deer. I live there. It's always nice to have a deer walk through periodically. The problem is, is that there's a lot of deer now. And with all due respect, I don't think it's going to, to wane again. And the reason is, is because we're having warmer winters. If you, I've read a number of studies that Dr. Bollinger gave me, and Dr. Bollinger, all these studies was, as well as other studies I'd seen, is, is that the deer herd, whitetail deer particularly, are expanding into greater and greater areas, and the populations are growing, growing and more simply because the winters are warmer. And that allows for larger offspring, a number of offspring, and less killed of the mature population during the winter time. And with no natural predators, as you pointed out, what ends up is we have more car collisions, which isn't a good thing. And if we don't have those car collisions, then we end up with deer dying because of natural causes, either disease or simply starvation. And I don't think anybody wants that. Thank you. And thank you for your consideration of this. I really do appreciate that you're taking your time to look at this.
Thank you. Thanks for all the information.
My name is Joseph Huber. I'm living up in Tamarant at six, seven, seven, the Jambay Drive. And I'm an avid deer hunter. And I actually leased land up north to deer hunt. And there's nothing more frustrating to come home and see eight, eight of those kudos standing in the driveway. Unfortunately, I mean, up in Tamar, we are living on an acreage. We have all, one and a half, two, two, three acres. Unfortunately, through the homeowners associations, it's, it's not allowed to hunt. It was, it would be actually perfectly legal to hunt, to bow hunt, a bow hunt, a bow hunt actually in my backyard. So, so we have some motions into our, to our homeowners association, we're talking to, it's like to maybe do Easter restrictions, you know? And say, hey, no, bow hunting is absolutely good back there, you know, which is would be also good for a DNR standpoint. No, I believe, because there's, I think, four hundred feet. So, so I think this may would be also a, a solution. I mean, I would kind of be disappointed as a resident now to live there and see somebody else shooting make sure there's actually feet. So, so this is all I have to guess to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments tonight? Hey, that concludes the second portion of public comment. Next up, article twelve, Manager Swayze, any comments?
Just wanted to share a couple of public input opportunities that are coming up for some projects that we have going on. So we have a series of four strategic plan workshops coming up to discuss the four areas of greatest concern that was gleaned from the strategic plan survey results. So the first two of those are going to be in the next two weeks. Tomorrow in this room, from six until seven-thirty, we'll be discussing the village area. And on Tuesday, from six to seven-thirty, in this room, we'll be discussing parks and pathways. So, and then the other two focus groups are, we'll be after spring break. We have all the details on those up on our website as well. And then on Monday, the twenty-eighth, from five until seven o'clock, we're having an open house over at our fire department. So anybody that's interested in learning more about the new fire station project up to this point can come over there and talk to the project managers or the fire department staff or any other of the township officials that may be there. And an opportunity to take a look around, too, and see just exactly why we are proposing a new fire station. If you haven't had a chance to see the video that Hunter produced with Chief Majors and his team, really demonstrates, you know, the problems that we're having over there, and opportunity for everybody to see that in real time. And then, of course, down the road, at our board meeting on May eleventh, we'll actually have a open house in this room prior to the board meeting, where people can come and take a look at the plans and ask questions prior to the board considering that project at that, at that meeting. So lots of opportunity for public input coming up, and I hope that residents of Cascade will join us.
And that's the twenty, this coming Monday about the fire station?
Yep, the twenty eighth.
At Fire Station One?
At Fire Station.
And where would one go to watch that video?
So it is on the, if you go to the township website, there's a fire station number one project page, and you can go there to click on the link. Or if you just wanted to go to YouTube, you can search for Cascade Township, too, and I'm sure.
That's a good point. It was on Facebook. I saw it, and it was a well-done video. But when you go back to Facebook, it's hard to find it again. So if we have it posted on the township website, you can watch it. That's good to know. I didn't notice there either.
And I was on it this weekend. I noticed that our current projects, I sent you an email, but our current projects are not current anymore, so.
Yep. So we had a big meeting today, and we're, promised we're getting that all up to speed. And we'll have like an archive section for projects that have been completed. You don't necessarily want to take that information off the website. You know, for example, just a couple of weeks ago, I had somebody asking about the Thirty Street Cemetery. I was able to direct them to the plans online, but agreed that the completed project should probably be in an archive section. And the current projects needed some updated verbiage and documents as well. So we're working on that.
Great. Treasure Pierce?
I, I hope people looked at the Cascade Fire Department annual report in the package. It gives a lot of information, and I think we should be very proud of them.
Article twelve, article thirteen, excuse me, board member comments. Trustee Shipley?
You know what's gonna happen? I'm gonna stand up and thank you guys for being here tonight. And the only thing I have to add is bring your neighbors next time. Decades ago, it was of another time, but the township board meeting chose to be full, not of irate citizens, but citizens that want to give their two cents worth and also know what's going on currently and in the future. So thanks for being here. And out in La La Land, you guys, too.
Anyone else?
Ben, can we get an update on the police patrols, updated? How we're gonna do that extra money in neighborhoods and?
Yep. So Supervisor Lestrance and I had a really good conversation with Kent County Sheriff's Department team about what to do, kind of both in the long term and the short term. So we talked about two different needs in the township. One, what I'll call high-visibility patrols. So those will be patrols in the, you know, residential areas, the residential commercial-ish areas, but, you know, just, you know, providing a presence in the community. You know, working on things like speeding and making sure that we don't have rise in, in the crime rate and all of that. Of course, the other issue that is ongoing issue in the township is our hotel populations and the activities that take place there. So in the short term, and I consider a short-term, two thousand twenty-two, they have a proposal that they put together for a certain amount, average hours per week of extra patrols, right? So we'll put a dollar amount to that. That'll come in front of the township board at the April thirteenth meeting to provide either high-visibility patrols or directed patrols at the hotels. And then we would meet with them on a month-to-month basis to figure out how those resources should be deployed. So the long-term solution is probably another community policing officer. Because having another community policing officer will be able to do both of those things at a fraction of the cost of paying overtime for our current patrols. The way their process works out, they wouldn't be able to provide that for us until the beginning of two thousand and twenty-three. But we'd like to start that process now. So we'll have a proposal in front of you for both of those on the thirteenth. And the sheriff's department will come and talk a little bit about what both of those programs would do for the community as well.
Thank you.
I heard from Andy Biermacher at the Barber, at the Cascade Barber Shop, and our local American Legion. I'm blanking now, but I think it was, they had, we had a hundred and four-year-old Cascade resident recently die. His name was Virgil Westdale, and he was, I think, one of the most decorated veterans of World War Two. I think there's even a book about him. He attended Cascade Christian Church. And just a really nice guy, big, big name in the community. So the, they've reached out and are wanting to honor him in some way, memorialize him. And they mentioned maybe the Church on the Hill Park. We haven't had any discussions at the board level, but some way to commemorate them. Him, yeah, sorry. So I'll reach out to them, and then we can have that discussion. He, he did enough service. I feel bad taking money from, for the, to get his name on something, but.
Any of you guys heard of Virgil before? Of course, you are. You're, you're older guy. Virgil came from a Japanese-American family descent. In World War Two, the Japanese were interned in camps because we didn't think that they could be trusted. Virgil ended up going with the three thirty-ninth Battalion to Italy, which was all Japanese-American descent volunteers. He gave up, or they took away his commercial airline license because he was Japanese, and he served anyways, and he received numerous awards and commendations. Virgil was a very unassuming person of this township for a long time and very interesting. And he did write a book, Blue Skies and Thunder.
Yes. And it says he was, his unit was the first to enter Daco, where they, when they liberated that. And he was honored by the congressional, he was given the Congressional Gold Medal. So a big person locally, big loss.
Discussion.
Yep. All right.
Motion made to end this session.
So motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald to adjourn. All in favor? Posed. We are adjourned, and I will give coffee to everybody.